All right, so this is the council work session for May 17th, 2021. So first order, I'm going to do a roll call. So council members present, Kathleen Reskin.
She's on, she just needs to unmute.
Yeah.
All right, we can hear you now, thanks Kathleen. And Ann McGregor.
Here.
And let's see, John Schumperlin.
Here.
Pam Mortensen.
Here.
Staff present, we have Chris Lindquist, our city clerk.
I am here.
Director of Administration, Ellie Palfus. Ellie?
She's trying to unmute, she's here.
Okay, I know Ellie's here. And then we have our city administrator, Mike Barone.
I am here.
And our finance director, Brian Grimm.
I'm here.
All right, and I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor. I think I got everyone, did I miss anyone? All right.
I think David's here, but whether I need to be or not, I don't know, I'm here though.
Okay, thanks David, I didn't see you before, so that's great. All right, with that, I'll hand it over to Ellie. We have two items on our, for our broadband discussion this evening. So Ellie, take it away.
Uh, let's hope she's getting back on here in a second. I think she had to jump off, yeah, we had to jump off, this could be her, so.
Hi, I apologize, I got kicked off, I'm here.
All right, so you're it Ellie, take it away.
I'm sorry, I'm here. Um, so at the previous work session, Mayor Whelan and the council requested that representatives from Lake, or Extra Time and Lakeside Networks present at this meeting to better answer their questions and kind of have a Q and A. So with that, I believe Kyle Ackerman and Jenny Luthen from Extra Time are first. So I will let you guys take it away.
Hi guys, good evening, this is Kyle Ackerman, how are you doing?
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming and joining us, thank you.
All right, well I appreciate your time. I think everybody got the packets that I sent to Ellie last week, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I was gonna just do a real quick overview here and then hopefully spend a little bit of our time answering questions for you. We're a little unique in the way we do things, so I'm sure you're gonna have some questions. But I wanted to thank Ellie for spending all the time putting this together. She's been working with us quite a bit on this and we've almost gotten to know her a little bit. So thank you Ellie. So the 30,000 foot overview is that we're already deploying broadband in your city. And we do have a personal objective of providing service to anybody in your area and beyond that wants it. And just a real quick overview of our service, it is true quality high-speed broadband and it's not satellite, some people confuse wireless with satellite, that's not us. We do operate at the lower level with structures. And we're also a hybrid wireless and fiber company, we do both. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a bit here. We've always, in the 22 years of our deployments or customer service, we've always provided speeds faster than what our customers need. And that's pretty exciting, and we've always been ahead of what the government considers broadband to be. I think it's defined as 25 megabit right now and it's soon to be 100. We've been doing 100 for almost three years now. And it just keeps getting faster. So we were pretty proud to say that we've always been ahead of what our customers need. We do have a very good word of mouth reputation. In fact, it is kind of hard to find us because the neighbors have to talk to each other to hear about us. We're so darn busy right now, but that's a good thing. Jenny and I feel good about establishing that, that people like what we have and they tell other people about it. We are a local company, most of our people live in the Dassel Hutchinson area centered around that and so we're very close to you. I know Delano and Minutrista very well, in fact, they lived in the Minutrista area 20 some years ago. The packages or the service that we provide is customizable. We're one of the few providers that do that, that allows a user to choose exactly what they need by keeping their price lower, it helps them out with their budgets. That may or may not be important to some people, but some people like to save 50 bucks a month. And so we found that that's pretty important to some people. I had mentioned earlier that we are a hybrid fiber and wireless model. We're blessed to have wireless technology that can deliver over if they want it. And that's pretty fast for most people and even me being an IT professional, I don't even need that. And so when we say we can deliver what people need, we can actually deliver what they want also. Okay? We've never had a price increase ever, I'm pretty proud of that also and we don't ever anticipate that happening. And other, other providers have had price increases, they've, their costs go up. We try to make sure our costs are always going down and the speeds are going up. So we're pretty happy to say that we've never had a price increase in 22 years. So what we would like you guys to consider, and we did go over this with Ellie, we would like to consider a relationship, bidirectional relationship with your city where you're a catalyst. And what I mean by that is you can speed up the deployment of broadband for your citizens. I got a couple of things that you can think about on that. We do charge our customers for their service. We charge an installation fee and sometimes ranges anywhere from 250 to 500 plus depending on how tricky their installations are. And so one of the things that we mentioned to Ellie that you guys could consider is maybe not helping us with money, but maybe helping your citizens with either a grant or a low interest loan to let them know that it doesn't cost them much to get that and if they focused on the monthly payments, then maybe it would be real easy for them to get broadband. I'm not sure how many of your citizens think that $500 is a lot to get broadband to come to their house, but some, some of our people outstate here in Minnesota think that that's a pretty good investment. Others think that that's, you know, I just, my phone today and it was a $600 cellphone. So I drove over mine yesterday. But anyway, that's, so people spending money on their phones, way more than it would cost to bring broadband to their houses. So it may or may not be something that your citizens would like you guys to do. I would like to, Jenny and I would like to help you and the city of Minutrista to be one of the first cities in the, in the state of Minnesota to be 100% broadband covered with higher speeds than 100. Even in tomorrow, tomorrow meaning next year, the year after that, unlimited essentially. We'd like to help you with that. And so you might want to consider possibly becoming a catalyst to help this go faster. It will happen regardless of, you know, our partnership with each other. We do know how to make the model work, kind of independent of government. But government can become a good catalyst. I'm not one that believes that I should get money from you, I want to make that very clear. It's been my model for 22 years and it's made us very happy as a company and we're doing fairly well from a profitability standpoint. I just don't, I just don't think government should be in, shouldn't be giving me money. Now, if you want to help your citizens out, that's, that's up to you and you can become a catalyst and make things happen. And finally, there is one way you can make, make things go a little faster for us. Water towers are very attractive to people that use wireless, and that's us. We could use them to reach quite a few of your citizens, not all, not even close to all because of the trees that we have to deal with. But they can become what I would call fiber points where we can use them to launch some of our smaller cells that we use for wireless and even small, on some of the smaller projects for fiber. And that's all I have, I guess, I went a little longer than I thought. But Jenny, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Just to expand a little bit more on what Kyle said, you know, as far as the marketing and kind of the stance that we take with that, you know, we, we have been able to sustain and grow extra time technologies with our referral based program. And so we do not do, you know, a ton of marketing when it comes to that. You don't see a, we don't have bulletin boards up on the sides of the roads or, you know, ads in the newspapers and stuff, just because like Kyle said, good word spreads and we are super busy just because of that. Outside of that, even though we are growing and sustaining our growth and growing even more, it's always been very important to both Kyle and I and everybody on our Extra Time team that we always practice and make our customers have that small town feel. And I believe that the people in your guys' area, the Minutrista area, that's why they're out there. They want to be far enough out of the metro to be able to experience that little bit of what rural Minnesota has to offer. And so I feel like from that standpoint, we would be a good fit for the people of your area to be able to allow that small town feel and give them that service that they're looking for. And then with that, you know, and we've touched on this with Ellie and I know Kyle's got a little bit of it in his notes that he sent to you as well, but we do try to always offer with that small town feel flexibility and custom type packages and, and different things that our customers need. So not any one of our customers is ever just a customer. It's in fact my motto that I try to make whoever I'm talking with at any given time be, make them feel like they're my only customer. And so that's just the things that are important for me to make sure that our customers are feeling as part of our extra time family when they become a customer of ours.
Thank you. I'm sure the council has questions and I'm gonna start it out here with the question. So what is the biggest obstacle to providing or expanding your service to more customers in Minutrista?
Well, I've got the answer to that, but I don't think you have a magic wand to just get me more employee. Everybody else out there would answer that maybe the same way. We need more employees, we're, we pay well and we, we're doing a good job with what we have. But like any of the businesses out there today, everybody could probably go a lot faster if they had employees. So that's kind of the tongue in cheek answer. Otherwise, it is, there's really nothing that really is slowing us down from a technology perspective. It takes Jenny a while to get people to know what we do and educate them on the micro cells and where we need to put stuff on their property and that kind of thing. But I don't know Jenny, what would your answer be on that one?
I guess if I had to pick outside of the things that Kyle has already mentioned, I think the biggest thing specifically for your guys' area would be probably the water towers. You know, just getting some nice solid and tall locations that we can use to help feed the network, to help get into some of those other areas without having to build smaller towers or micro cells everywhere. I guess that would be, that would be my biggest request.
Yeah, that's a good point. To get, to get into Independence and Delano, we had to build two towers. And I don't like building towers, I just don't think they're necessary. But in this case, to get to Franklin customers, we did build a tower, 140 footer on their property, on the township property. And then over Independence, it was really kind of a bidirectional thing on Independence. They needed more bandwidth for their police department because they couldn't upload their videos to their policemen. They'd come in at night with their, you know, their body cameras and everything and they could put them on a server, but they needed to upload them to somewhere and they didn't have the bandwidth to do that. So we entered into a deal with them where we built a tower and they became the landlord and we gave them free service. Okay, so Jenny's right, you know, if we have deployment things like your water towers or towers, it does speed things up.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna pass it over to the council. I'll start with Ms. McGregor, I'm sure you have questions.
I, I do. You talk about being on the towers, but you also talk about the unique tree cover. What's unique about our tree cover?
I drive out to South Dakota all the time and there, you can see like four miles without a tree. I don't think there's anywhere in Minutrista you can see four miles without it getting in the way. And our, and our services line of sight, meaning that you have, your house or something on your property has to be able to see the transmitter. And there's, there's a reason why there's not a lot of wireless providers in your area. It's, it's tricky. We had to figure, we had to spend three years working on the model that works for what I would call the Delano area. If I was a smarter business owner, I would be out either on a desert or a mountain or out in western Minnesota doing this. But we love, we love problems and we love coming up with solutions. So the, the short answer is that trees are bad and you have a lot of them and that's what makes the beauty of your city. Trees do make the part of your personality. And so we have to work around them or with them. And so that's the challenge we have with trees.
Okay, and one more question, and have, have you talked, spoken with Ellie about the people specifically in Minutrista that we're trying to reach for some kind of better service? And so are they all in a heavy?
The folks that have reached out to us through Ellie or directly are in all different areas of your guys' city. We have people from up, that actually are closer to like the mound area. We have people that are closest to St. Bonnie. So it's, it's everyone, it's throughout, they're spread equally throughout your area. And as Ellie can probably attest to, as her and I email back and forth with some of these people, it's, it's very hit or miss for us right now as to who we can get service to and who we can't. And so the idea would be that, you know, working with you guys, we would get, be able to get more of them to be cans versus cans, obviously.
Yeah, in your packet, I talked about Jim Samuelson. He had reached out to you Ellie and said how happy he was. He was a challenge, okay? I had to go there and I had to engineer what we call our flagpole micro, micro cell system. But the thing is, he lived in, he was kind of on a hill, but yet he couldn't reach any of our towers with a normal deployment. But he said, you know, Kyle, I have, and I think he had six or seven neighbors, does that sound about right Jenny?
Yeah, I think we have almost all of them hooked up already.
Yeah, so he's got six or seven neighbors that lived in a little pocket that no other wireless provider could really get to. And even bringing fiber to them would be very uneconomical because they, they are far enough away from everybody where somebody would have to dig up a road and bring in quite a bit of fiber. So I would say Jim is a success story that we want to replicate. So we get challenges like Jim, they come to us and they say, hey, I've got five or six of my neighbors or I got a, an HOA or a neighborhood that wants this. Another one is a group of people over by Whale Tail Lake. They have as many trees out there, they have houses that do have pretty good exposure. And what all we need to do for them is to come up with a transmitting micro cell and then we can initiate their fiber project.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anyone else? John, do you have questions?
I do have a number, but just, I'll just ask a couple and some of these are maybe just an education for me. In your frequently asked questions support that we got here, you make reference to that, and I'll read the, the sentence that says, "Are wireless dash fiber systems ultimately become all fiber over time?" How is that?
Oh, that's a very good question. And it's, it's kind of hard to understand because I don't know if any other providers take this approach. Rather than spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of getting fiber to everybody right away, we use what I would call, let's use Jim Samuelson's neighborhood as another example. We could connect them all with fiber relatively quickly, okay? Because we use, we use a backyard approach where we don't have to dig up roads or anything like that. And then what we do is we feed that little fiber project with a super fast, I would call it air fiber or gigabit plus radio. And ultimately, if somebody else either north or south or adjacent to Jim would want fiber, another little project like his, we could connect those two projects with the fiber. And in the Delano area, we're seeing that they're starting to get fairly close to each other where you could just start connecting those little projects. And ultimately, you pull the plug on the wireless connection between them, even though that wireless connection is always going to be fast enough. So ultimately, it would evolve into a full fiber network. We do have fiber presence in your area already and, and we would add more. I mentioned in my FAQs that we might, you know, if we can do a water tower deal with you, we'd probably bring fiber to the base of the one or both of the towers. That help?
Sure. In, in relation to that then, so there's a micro cell on somebody's backyard, are, and that'll feed X number of people depending on the topography, I imagine. If that goes to fiber, then does that micro cell go away or is the micro cell always there?
The, that's a really good question. If we could get everybody in the neighborhood, that micro cell could go away. Okay, and let's use Jim as an example again. Let's just say I do connect him to one of the adjacent projects. His micro cell doesn't really reach that many people because it was really designed just for his little, let's call it valley. If all the people were connected to fiber and I had another project, you know, that was a little closer to you, we would probably take a dump.
Okay. And, and one more, just to get my two cents worth. And there's a map that was included in the support that has the city of Minutrista drawn in line, lined in. And there's a lot of yellow, little yellow dots, are those the proposed micro cells?
Yeah, Ellie already cornered me on that one. I said, she was, she was just wondering how many it would take. And that's just a roll the dice and I know your area fairly well, but I don't know it well enough to engineer it that quickly. You know, you take housing developments, you take groups of people and you try to get them to work together. We've been very successful at having neighborhood fiber meetings. Every one that we've had has been a success. And now with COVID coming around, it is harder to get to meet with these people. We like to go meet in person and we have it at somebody's house. But instead, we've been just doing smaller projects. Over in the Delano area, I think the Fenner Fanning one was 30 people Jenny? Does that sound about right, 30 to 40?
Yep, yep, we had a, I think the, we have a 98% rate there of people that went with our service.
Yeah, and so, you know, the number of those cells, that was just a guess. And one of the other things, when we did speak with your, with you guys last in person, I told you there was two things that I really wanted to hear about and that's where you guys thought there were voids. And I wanted to hear from people that needed service. We kind of engineer around them, okay? We don't, we never really build it and they will come. We build it for the people that really want it and then they talk to their neighbors and it just keeps expanding organically. So that, the, the short answer, the number of those cells is unknown, but if I was gonna, if I had all the money in the world and I was just gonna build it and let them come, it might look like that, it might be that many flagpoles. I call them flagpoles because they really look like that.
I, I understood, I figured it was, if that's what they were, it certainly was just a random, but actually having been out there and actually driven all the roads. But one more question then, based on that same map, if the water towers come into play, do all of those micro cells still need to exist?
Uh, probably because, I'm gonna really guess here. I'm gonna say that the water tower is only gonna reach maybe 20% of your people. Okay, that's a guess, don't even, nobody, nobody record this. But it does, it does do a really good job of feeding those micro cells where sometimes we've got to figure out how to connect those micro cells to something. A water tower, almost every site survey I've done in your area, I can see one of, one or both of your water towers. And that means, that means that it's real easy for us to come into a neighborhood by using that as a launch point. And if we have fiber to the base of that water tower, then you almost have an unlimited pipe system to get to each of those poles.
Thank you. I'll defer to the next council member.
Okay, thanks John. Pam or Kath, we'll go to Kathleen first and then Pam, you're after Kathleen.
Okay. Um, I just have a question about the micro cells. How sturdy are they, like, you know, with winds coming through and everything? And then how easy are they to replace if something takes them down?
We can, we build the foundation and it's below frost line and it's, it's really, it's a two inch pipe, two inch diameter pipe, so it is literally like a flagpole. Very low wind resistance in there, we don't put a lot of antennas or anything on there, so the drag on it is very low. It does have little tiny guy wires, if you drive by Jim sometime, you'll, you'll see the little tiny guy wires. But at a distance, I'm gonna guess a couple hundred, 300 feet, you don't even see them because they're so small. Those guy wires handle plenty of tension for the wind loading. And we've been doing these for three years, we've never had anything even close to a failure on it. If it did fail, it would probably be because a flood washed out one of the foundations or something like that and it would be really, if it put it back up, we can build them in less than three hours. Okay, oh, we did, we did have one failure, right?
I was just gonna say, we did have a failure this, it was before Christmas last year. A gentleman that was contracted to put up Christmas lights for one of our landlords actually backed into the guy wire and snapped it. And it did fall over because of that. Our team was out there that afternoon and we actually used our lift as a temporary tower to put it up so that our customers would not be without service. So within, Kyle's correct with the three hours, we were able to get everybody back up and running in less than three hours. And then the day we rebuilt the tower, we simply rebuilt it and then just moved everything from the lift over and that was a very minimal downtime. And some of those customers, we were even able to repeat from other areas as a short temporary backup also.
Okay. And then if, if we do partner with you and do this for Minutrista, how long do you think it would take to get everyone up? Who wanted to be in theory? To get the micro cells up, we need to get the coverage in that.
Yeah, and it's, it's not an overnight process, you know, each one has to be engineered. And because we do, we do such a good job of engineering it, we have to take the time to make sure that they're getting the full, you know, full service capacity. We, you know, I wasn't kidding when we have a labor crunch, so we do have to deal with that just like a lot of other people. If, if you can find, somehow find me 50 employees, I could do it a lot faster than I could with, you know, than what we have now. But I don't know, it's a really hard one to answer. It's gonna be a, you know, one or two year project. It's just like, just like digging.
Just to give you an idea, we can, as of right now, we can do anywhere from two to three installs a day depending on the complexity of them. So, you know, that would, and then as we would add more employees to our team, we could obviously double that, you know, with more teams to be able to go out and do more installs. But as of right now, that's, we're doing two to three installs a day. So we're talking, you know, somewhere between 10 and 20 customers a week that we can get hooked up.
Yeah, and we have done a lot faster than that. Let's just say, you know, we had the Jim, Jim Samuelson's tower up and all the rest of them were just real easy repeats off of that. And we've done as many as, didn't we do seven or eight?
Six, six or seven we did in one day in the Greenleaf area.
Yeah.
But Jenny, that's, you're talking about connecting customers to the towers. What about how many towers or how, you said it takes about three days to build a tower? And how many, oh, okay.
We, we can build a tower, three hours, we can build a tower in a day.
Okay, and if you had, but because you're short on employees, how many are you building now?
Well, we only build them on an as needed basis. So like, let's just say you guys decided that we would be able to have access to the water towers. So like each of those, we would be able to build in a day. And then the days preceding that, we would be able to do, you know, two to three to four installs per day for customers in the area.
Okay.
As building that, you know, part, part of building the tower was we have to do a foundation and we gotta wait for a week to have that dry. The foundation work, we can do two of them in a day. So we could essentially, you know, do two foundations and then wait a week and then you could almost do probably one to one and a half installs the next, next week.
And just to clarify, when we're talking towers, we talk, towers would be talking about water towers or like the pre-existing structure. When we're talking about the foundations and building those, that would be what we're looking at, like the micro cells.
Correct, yeah, I understand, that's what I was trying to get at.
Okay, perfect.
You're saying it takes about two weeks to build a micro cell tower because of the foundation work that needs to be done?
That would be correct, two weeks lapse time, yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
Um, Lisa, can I pop in here? Jenny and Kyle, I think this might help myself and the council. So if you get access to a water tower tomorrow, how soon are you serving the first customer?
Well, let's see here. Jenny, we're probably looking at a couple of weeks because we've got to get other towers to, the equipment to feed them, is that right? And we can get the equipment on the water tower fast.
Yeah, the nice thing with the Minutrista, the nice thing with the Minutrista towers is we're, we kind of already surround the area. And so for us to get a feed to those water towers would be able to happen fairly quickly. Right now, our schedule, if you guys were to say, okay, you guys can have our water towers, you know, so tell us that right now, we would be looking at probably the first week in June.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Provided we can get the equipment, but I know that we have some plans for that as well. Provided we can get the equipment, but I know that we have some plans for that as well.
Thank you.
So, um, are you aware of, um, the location of our water towers?
Yes, there's the new, new, yeah, I see them all the time. I, I see them in my dreams. No, no, there's the, there's the new one that you're building that's, uh, west of St. Bonnie. And then there's the one on the north side up by the, is it the high school mound?
Yes. Yep.
Those are the only two I know of. If there's more, I haven't seen them.
Okay. There's a one on King's Point Road as well. Um, just off of Highway seven. So it'd be on the, it, it's in the southeast corner of Minatrista.
Oh, okay. I haven't, uh, that's interesting. I haven't seen that one.
Right. Okay.
Probably drove by and I just didn't pay attention to it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, we're gonna wrap this up here real quick. Uh, council, any other questions? Uh, Pam?
I have some, I have questions. I don't forgive me. Okay. Going, going back to Jim, the residents that have this already. Um, what is the radius that his, uh, microcell could reach out to?
The, the short answer is it can reach five to, to seven miles. The real answer is whatever his, whatever his valley, you know, whatever the top of it can see in his valleys. Kind of, you know, there's a limited amount that you could see there. So probably, um, because I've been up there, you, you can probably get a couple of miles off of that one. But it would have to be strategically looked at for sure. It's not real obvious. But technology that we put on there can go any, up to ten miles. But because of the, the topography of the land, we're really limited by your hills and trees.
Keep in mind, you know, it is a line of sight service and so that is obviously the focus. But just an example, where I live, I'm out west of Hutchinson. And I'm not anywhere near the South Dakota border like Kyle talked about earlier. But I am actually nine miles as the crow flies from the tower and I can see it from my property. Uh, but where I live, it's a lot flatter and a lot easier to connect customers.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Um, so then let's say Jim put a microcell in his, on his property. And now that some of the neighbors are feeding off of his cell. So how does the cost work on that? Because Jim obviously made probably a pretty big investment. That he, I mean, is the cost for the neighbors the same, even though they're going to be feeding off of Jim's cell?
I can answer that question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Every, every situation ends up being just a little bit different as to, uh, what kind of relationship we work out with the landlord of those microcells. Um, and that kind of goes back to that small town customer service that I was talking about earlier where we really try to address the needs of not only the person that's either investing in the tower or working with us to build that relationship and put that on their property. Um, but also the needs of the people in the area. So we've, we've done all, any scenario you can think of, we've probably done it. So we've done options where we've built a tower and six or 10 different people have all split the cost equally to pay for it. Um, we've done options where the landlord pays for it and then in return, um, we, um, negotiate like he gets free monthly internet service. Uh, we have done what's called a six pack where as long as we have at least sixteen customers off of it, the customer gets free service. Um, so there's, there, it really just depends on what that particular, we call that a landlord of our tower is looking for.
Okay. And, um, we're going back to your map. Um, John, you asked a lot of the questions I had too. Um, so thanks for answering all those. Um, who decides on the pole placements? You guys obviously debate. You have to get the residents approval. Are these poles or microcells 5G?
No, they aren't. Not even close. Uh, they just, for, for a simple argument's sake here, just say that they, they're putting out less power than a high-powered internal router would be in your house as far as, uh, the dangerous energies. We're limited by the amount of power that we can put out and, uh, we have to have real good line of sight. We can't shoot through trees like, uh, you know, like the providers can. So it's not, not even in, be close to the same thing as 5G.
Okay.
And as far as the location is concerned, you know, that's something that we tried to work out with. You know, we might have in mind like what our first option or first choice would be. Um, but maybe that, that particular neighbor isn't interested in doing something like that, um, or not having that on their property. Uh, then we, we might have an option B that we would go to instead. And so these, you know, the, what we have on for these dots, like Kyle said, these are just kind of some things that he picked based on the, um, geography, the lay of the land with the lakes and how to get service to the most people, um, without having to put up even more microcells.
And, and we do, we do pay attention. When I'm designing a microcell, I, I try to put it in a place where people's windows can't see it and where it's not obtrusive. You know, you don't want to be staring out at your beautiful backyard and looking at even a flagpole. So we try to, sometimes we put them next to a shop so that, uh, you know, people aren't looking at it. Sometimes we even put it amongst trees. There's one up north of Delano that we have actually got it buried in the trees. And, uh, so we, I'm very asthetics. I don't want somebody driving by something and looking at, uh, and saying, hey, this is, this is a 5G tower or something like that. I just don't want that to happen.
A good example of the improvement would be like, just if you look up, um, on the map, like Old Yoke Lake. You can see he's kind of got four of them strategically placed around the lake so that they do their best coverage for the higher area.
Okay. And the last question I have is, um, the labor crunch. Um, I'm sure you guys, if this is nationwide, but, um, what is your recruiting plan? All right. Because you are gonna need more people. I mean, every, every city I know is going to be, they're asking, especially rural, um, are asking and, and wanting better internet services. So do you guys have a recruiting plan to get more people?
Oh, yes. Uh, poor Jen works a lot of hours. Uh, we're scouring every little, uh, every little rock. We're turning over every little rock looking for things. Um, we're, uh, you know, I, it's a good point that you mentioned here that other cities are looking for fiber. The fiber, if you, if you went to somebody and said, I need a fiber project, then I got a real strong feeling that you're gonna be asked to wait at least a year because they're in the same labor crunch we are. Um, we have to, uh, they're probably already have their summer planned for fiber deployments. And they're probably in the same pickle we are because everybody is. So the, we are, we are actively recruiting and Jen is doing a good job. And, uh, I have to say, we are making heavy, but it's a slow process because we're, you know, just driving through Delano the other day. You know, you're starting out at twenty to twenty-four factory job, um, which raises all of our, you know, our starting wages too. And then we try to keep them long-term. We've got, uh, you know, half of our company is owned by the employees. So that's, uh, that's fun that we, you know, get people like Jenny that are part of the company. And so we do, we spend a lot of time and our doors are open for, um, interviews and resumes. And, uh, all I can say is that we're doing the best we can and I think we're gonna prevail.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we, we do have, um, some other people here with us this evening. So I'm gonna wrap up our conversation here with, um, extra time. Thank you again for joining us and providing us with, um, lots of good information. So Ally, with that, I'll pass it back to you. I think, um, our next one is, uh, Lakeside, uh, Lakeside?
Yeah. So we have, uh, Jack Dom, I believe, on the call from Lakeside Networks to, uh, do kind of the same session we did with Extra Time. So take it away, Jack.
Good evening, council and staff. Thank you for inviting us to speak this evening regarding internet service in Minatrista. My name is actually Joe Morimoto, but I am accompanied by Andrew Daly and Jack Dom, the founders and owners of Lakeside Networks. We've been looking at servicing the city for nearly two years now. And we hope to reach a resolution that will allow us to bring our internet services into Minatrista. A quick summary of our company, Lakeside Networks is an internet provider founded in June of 2019 in Spring Park by Lake Minnetonka residents, four Lake Minnetonka residents, with the goal of providing a homegrown and reliable option for internet services in the area. With our main focus being expansion west of the lake. We bring high-speed internet into areas where traditional cable providers, uh, provide either poor service or no service at all. We've received demand from residents of Minatrista and we hope to meet their individual broadband needs. Our services are mainly based on fixed wireless and we've recently started working on expanding our network by running fiber, of which we have a few projects we're beginning this summer. We offer speeds ranging from twenty megabits per second to one hundred megabits per second for our wireless residential customers and up to five hundred megabits per second for our businesses. Additionally, we aim to introduce a two hundred megabit per second wireless plan for our residential customers this summer. We do not have any data caps, any hidden fees or any cancellation fees for our services. And we take pride in the transparency and the relationships we have built with our customers. Thank you again for the opportunity to come out and speak tonight. We'd like to open it up now for any questions from the council.
Thank you, Joel. Um, all right, council, again, um, maybe I'll start with, um, Pam, I'll start with you this time. Do you have specific questions? I don't want to leave you out.
Do you have residents right now? How many do you have in the, uh, that are in Minatrista that are currently using your services?
Uh, probably about five to 10. Um, we mainly are based out of Spring Park here and we, um, we just actually expanded into the Excelsior area. So, um, we are looking to move out west, but we, um, we're mainly based on line of sight in the Lake Minnetonka area right now. So it's just mainly residents who, um, are on Lake Minnetonka who are also in Minatrista.
Okay. Um, I think I'm gonna pass it along to other, uh, council members to hear their questions, uh, before I go on.
Sure. Um, John Trumperlin?
Uh, thanks. Uh, looking at the maps that were supplied, uh, it looks like if one wanted to get a hundred download and upload, uh, it would be your high speed plan. And looking at the map that, uh, that was supplied, it looks like again with our topography and, and where people live, et cetera, we'd have a hard time meeting that for all of our, all of our residences. Am I looking at that correctly based on what I just said?
Um, yeah, yes, um, kind of. Uh, yeah, so, yeah. With, with any fixed wireless technology, you will, you won't have a blanket coverage of the city. Um, you, you're not gonna have perfect service unless you put up, uh, little microcells, um, every, you know, uh, five hundred to a thousand yards. So, um, it, it's gonna be difficult to get a hundred meg service to everyone in the city. But, um, there, there are definitely large pockets we can bring it to. Um, and, uh, the other areas we can look, where we don't offer or we don't have on the map, uh, where, where it would show a hundred meg service, we could fill that in with, um, a small micro point of presence, microcell.
And one more question, then the maps again, were they, what I'm looking at, were they contingent on, um, our water towers being involved or not?
Uh, yes, they were. So, um, the maps that we provided were contingent on the Minatrista water tower, uh, the mound high school by the soccer fields. And then the one right across from the, uh, Hunter's Crest HOA. Um, and then we have also actually been looking into two other towers, um, in the area as well that we, uh, we, we'll commit to at least one of them. Um, and we've been negotiating leases with both. But one of the tower owners, we're having a bit of a difficulty with. But, um, we will commit to purchasing some private infrastructure as well that is already existing in the area.
Okay.
Can you, can you touch on that just quickly? Um, when you say private towers or private structures, what do you mean by that?
Um, just privately owned, uh, cell towers that are already existing in the city. So for example, there's one right on Highway seven, um, on Marywood Lane.
Yeah. Okay.
With, uh, the landlord there. And then we've also been in discussions a little bit with, um, PBS there. I think a little more out, um, west in the city, they've got a monopole tower.
Yeah. Is that the one on Highland?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, John.
Well, I'll defer to the next council member.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Anne McGregor?
Um, hi. And my question actually, I want to start with Ally. Ally, look through the maps as well. And the, the two hundred and eighty people that we need to service are, is Lakeside able to reach them?
Oh, I'm not able to answer that question, Anne. I don't know exactly where those remaining customers are. Um, I imagine Lakeside is overlapping with some other services, media comment frontier. But I imagine they could get to some, um, areas that are unserved. I mean, to really figure that out, we'd have to do a, a study to figure out where those customers are. I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah. And just to add to that too, um, we'd be happy to, we can run a report against that map, uh, through our partner, Google, um, who does all of RF mapping. And we can run a, an address report if you guys do have a list of specific addresses that you'd like to see hit. Um, and then we can kind of see how, uh, basic coverage report at each of those houses. So, if, if that can be provided, that's absolutely something we could, uh, run and get data for.
Okay. Very good. That's what I'd like to see.
I think that would be helpful for the council in making some, uh, future decisions. So.
Okay.
Anne, anything, any other questions at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Kathleen?
Um, I just have a question about the LTE towers. Um, how many of those would you estimate we need and what do those look like?
Um, the LTE sites look, uh, pretty much the exact same as our traditional fixed wireless, um, high-speed sites. The antennas are a little bit bigger, um, not by much, maybe, uh, ten to fifteen inches taller. Um, and then there's a little bit of a bigger external radio that goes on the back. But that, um, most of the time is completely hidden or covered up by the antenna itself. And in terms of amount of towers, uh, you could actually pretty significantly increase the, uh, coverage in the cities just by implementing LTE on, um, the three water towers that are owned by the city. And I, I'd say probably actually blanket coverage of the city with at least, uh, fifty to eighty megabits per second. Service on, um, probably the PBS tower and then two of the, uh, water towers from the city.
Okay. That's all I've got for now.
Jack, I have a follow-up with that one. So you said if you have access to all three water towers and we're looking at twenty-five thousand per water tower to deploy this. So it's seventy-five thousand-ish is what we're looking at for that blanket over the city.
Uh, or, sorry.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Uh, so it, it would be two, two of the water tower sites would be utilized and then, um, for LTE and then one would actually be, uh, probably the PBS tower would be better utilized. Um, then the, uh, third water tower, which is in the Woodland Cove area, I believe, on Highway seven.
Okay.
But yeah, that would be contingent on us being able to get access to, um, the PBS one. We have talked with them a little bit, but, uh, there's a little bit of a change in staff right now. So.
Okay. Thank you.
So the, the PBS one being on Highway seven and/or on Highland or?
Uh, just the PBS tower on Highland Road. Uh, we,
Highland Road. Okay.
Yeah. We, we wouldn't be utilizing the tower on Highway seven really, um, unless there, it turns out a significant, um, amount of the customers you're looking to hit throughout the city are in that area. But just based on what I know about, um, the demographics of the city, I, those are more of the densely populated areas. And, um, there's a lot better line of sight down there. So I, I don't really anticipate LTE, uh, being as beneficial, um, at those, uh, southern water tower.
Okay. Okay. So the PBS and Highland. Okay. All right. And then, um, I guess again, I think, um, council member McGregor's comment, um, is really, and question or request is really needed in terms of who would be covered, should you be able to use our water towers? And then the other question is, um, if it came up where, uh, there's some areas that aren't covered using our water towers, we'd want to know how many and where, um, additional, um, the microcell towers would go. Uh, assuming you can't, let's just say the PBS tower is not an option. And then the other question, so I, I think we need to see that map. The other thing is, um, how, again, maybe from our last conversation, what is the timing on something like this? Um, how long would it take you to, to provide coverage for some or all of Minatrista?
Um, I think we're looking at, Um, I think we're looking at probably, uh, around the fall, we could actually, um, get everything deployed up on the towers. Um, it kind of just depends on the engineering and everything. Um, sometimes it could be a slow plot, uh, process when you're sharing with other cell providers. Um, we just expanded to the Excelsior Water Tower, and, uh, T-Mobile had some pretty strict requirements on us doing a lot of engineering to, uh, share the space with them. So it kind of just depends on a bunch of factors.
Well, also, um, we do paint our equipment a lot of times too when we go up on a water tower, so. And I know the water towers in Minatrista are white, so it'd really only be painting, um, like the mast and some of the clamps. But, um, we, we do make sure we, uh, take care of the visual aesthetics and, um, take care of the water tanks as well. Because, um, we, we like to, uh, keep everything in very good condition because the water tanks in the state are inspected pretty regularly and to a pretty rigorous standard, so.
Okay, all right. Um, so then the other, my last question would be, when could you get back to the council with this map that Councilmember McGregor was talking about, the coverage map?
Um, so I would, to, to run a report against, uh, specific, like, um, houses and stuff that we can reach, we need to have a list of data ahead of time. But if there's like a list of residents who have reached out to you, um, and if you guys have those or that list, I can run that against our mapping and figure out, um, who all exactly would fall into that. Um, I would just need an address list.
Okay, and so let's say we got an address list to you within the next two weeks. Would you be able to provide us with this mapping, um, the second week, uh, the second council meeting in June, which is June 14th, I believe?
Yeah, I, I don't think we'd have an issue providing that data by then, no.
Okay, all right, thank you. Council, um, additional questions?
Yeah, I have one. Um, and I hope I'm not overstepping with this question, but, um, let's say we wanted to bring both Lakeside and Extra Time on. Um, is there interference between the two systems?
Um, I mean, it, it does depend on the equipment being utilized and then, um, just kind of the carriers working together and agreeing on, um, which frequencies to stick to. Otherwise, I have seen scenarios too where, um, the providers would actually share the cost of the equipment, and they'd actually share the equipment up on the tower. Um, so then there wouldn't really be any interference in those scenarios. But, um, it, it does get a little bit more complicated on the networking side of things, definitely. Um, once, uh, you get into sharing your equipment and things like that.
And Mr. Ackerman, do you want to say anything on that?
Or Jenny?
So, one second, I'm sorry. Um, I had my volume muted. We work together with, uh, in fact, out in Meeker County, there's five or six wireless providers. We can get along. It, uh, we've, we've been doing it for 22 years. Um, sometimes it requires frequency coordination. Um, other times, uh, you know, he's absolutely right, uh, we could share space on a tower possibly. Um, it, uh, it all depends on, you know, the relationship we have, and most of us wireless providers get along well. Um, we're all out for the same thing. We have limited frequencies, so we need to get along and make sure that they all work. So the, the answer is yes, we can get along.
Okay, so then between the two of you, it does sound like we might be able to, 280 people, we have to get coverage to.
Yeah, yeah, we're happy to work with, um, Extra Time in any capacity.
Good, well, good. Thank you. Okay, good questions. John, anything else?
Uh, yeah, just one more question for my uneducated mind here. You have a statement that, that says standard fixed wireless coverages, no minimum take rate, pre-signup rate required. So when I log, or when I go online with your service, I have to predefined how much power, I guess would be the term I would use, how much power I need or I want to use. Uh, that dictates what my monthly fee is going to be, is that correct?
Yeah, so, um, we offer three residential service plans right now, um, ranging from 20 meg a second to 100 meg per second. And, uh, our 100-meg plan is $90 a month, and we'll, uh, usually install a, a more, uh, high-power antenna with that. And then our lower, uh, 20-meg plan is $50 a month. So yeah, depending on what speeds you want, um, you would be paying differently.
And how, how changeable are those if one has a student, uh, in school and is doing online, and then the student moves away and they want to downgrade? Is that a simple process?
Uh, no, not at all. That can be done almost instantaneously at the customer's request.
Yeah, no additional thinking for anything like that either.
Thank you.
Okay. Kathleen or Pam?
Nope.
All right.
No, I think I'm good too.
All right, great. Um, this time I don't have any. I think, um, the next question, I, I guess we'd wait, we'll wait until our, our June meeting to find out the coverage. And in the meantime, I guess, uh, maybe staff could put something together, and we'll have to talk about, um, what information. Um, maybe I should ask the council, what additional information at this time would you want staff to bring back at our June meeting? I'll give you a little time to think about that.
Okay, this is Ann. Um, what I would like, what I would like is a chart, and I want the names of the, uh, potential companies on there with what it is they're going to provide in terms of speed, how much the setup costs, how much the installation costs, what it's going to cost the resident versus, um, the city. I want a chart of all the information so we can actually take it from that point of view.
Hmm, that's a, that's a good point. Excellent. Good idea. Yep.
Um, tapping onto that, Ann, I like that idea too. Could, uh, Ally come up with the chart? So the chart is done by both companies, including the other MediaCom, so that we can see all three lined up next to each other to compare everything?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. The other thing to add into that chart, um, I'd like some kind of timeline ideas. I mean, you know, are we looking at a year? Are we looking at two years? You know, timeline, I think, is also, um, important. So I know that might be a little more difficult, but if we could have at least some estimates in there, that would be good.
Yeah, do you want me, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, well, at this point in time, I'm going to be a bit of a wet blanket on all this, uh, stuff. So as the council understands, we already have a contract with MediaCom. One of the things that we've been working on with them and still have a meeting to be held with them, we've requested that, um, is to be able to find out where the 280 or 300 homes, or whatever the exact number is, actually are. I don't think we know that. So there's no way in two weeks Ally's going to have a list of the 280 homes by address. That's not going to happen. We might be able to go to a big map of Minatrista and circle some big, large circles and say, it's probably over here, probably over here. But general, we are not going to have an address map. So until we get that, it's going to be impossible for these two companies to be able to say, yeah, we could put, get service there or not. Now, in general, they may be able to if they're, if they're buying space on our, uh, water tower or towers or other, uh, towers that might be available to them. Uh, the PBS tower was mentioned, et cetera, private towers. But until we have a meeting with MediaCom and find out exactly where we are on Phase 2 and where we are on Phase 3 in our current contract with them, we do not know the addresses for the homes that don't have service. I'm not talking about homes that could have service and chose not to with them, but I'm talking about those homes that don't have any connection at all for internet service right now with MediaCom.
Well, Mike, I think.
Until we get that list, we won't be able to help these other two companies out.
Well, Mike, I'm, I'm pretty certain that, uh, some of us know the areas where we don't have MediaCom. And, um, that, that really wouldn't be so difficult. But I think the list that, um, Lakeside was talking about is more, where do we want to see, where do we want to see their service extended to? Or where do, I guess, people don't have service, but I think we can pretty much tell you area-wise where there's no MediaCom or no other service available. I think that's, that's, um, I, I know several areas right off the top of my head, and I could give you exact addresses. Um, I'm sure Ann could, and probably Pam could as well, and maybe even, um, John could as well. We all live out here in the rural areas.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I still think until we find out specifically what the issue is with MediaCom and what they'll be able to do or not do, um, I still think it's a bit of a shot in the dark to think in three months, some of these people, uh, they could have service, but they may not, I'm not sure. I just don't think there's any way of knowing right now. Which is why we're exploring this.
Oh, sorry, Mike. Just to clarify, um, I can still create a chart that compares speed, setup, installation, cost to resident.
Right.
Is that something you still like? I don't necessarily need address, the addresses would just be for the map, and if it could get coverage, but this chart that Ann was referring to wouldn't necessarily require that? Is that something you guys still wanted, or?
Yeah, I do.
That would be helpful?
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Council, what else? Anything else?
Well, I think, this is Pam, I think, um, Mike does have a point of, we need to find out where are we at with MediaCom, because we are, you know, contracted with them right now. And are they interested in expanding? And if not, that leaves the door open for other opportunities. If they, you know, if, if they are, uh, you know, eager and ready to work with us, um, you know, it will depend what MediaCom, in my opinion, comes up with to expand what we, um, you know, want to go forward with, with others.
Hmm, maybe, maybe not, though. Why do we have to limit ourselves to one company?
Yeah, and people that have MediaCom aren't necessarily happy with them, so they might like another option available.
But we, yeah, we do have, oh, go ahead, Kathleen.
I, I, I agree that we need to know what MediaCom's going to do, but I don't think that necessarily completely affects our decision on whether or not we add another provider. So we should get all the information we can from Lakeside and Extra Time so that whenever MediaCom finally gets back to us, we have a full picture and might decide, okay, well, we can expand our contract with MediaCom because technically that's for cable, and still provide, you know, a different option to the residents.
I, I agree with Kathleen, yeah. Mm-hmm. Good point, thank you.
So, um, so I, I still think it's important to hear what MediaCom has to say, though. I think the follow-up on that meeting is something we need to hear.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I completely agree, yeah.
And, um, Mike is trying to set that meeting up. They're slow to get back to us. So we're hoping to get a meeting together, uh, before our next, um, broadband discussion, which would be the second or the third Monday in June. So that, that's our hope.
That's correct, that's our hope, yep.
Yeah, if they'll get back to us.
Well, it hasn't all been.
I just spoke with.
Yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead, Ally.
Uh, I, I just had a call with Teresa today to follow up on the letter that we sent to Ann. She is out of town early this week, but she has contacted, uh, the personnel that would need to be in that meeting, and she's waiting for them to get back to her. So it's in the works, but like Mike said today, it's like herding cattle, getting, you know, 10 people to meet, uh, at the end of a pandemic. So we will be working on it, hopefully before the next meeting.
Right. Okay, which is good. So I think that would give, um, give us some inkling as to what MediaCom's, I, plans are. Um, but I also think it would be good to, uh, get some idea, um, from regarding what the city could do or how we can, um, help assist expanding, um, maybe at least another provider as well.
I agree on that.
All right. Um, any other questions or comments before we adjourn here? Again, I want to thank, um, Lakeside Networks as well as Extra Time for, uh, joining us this evening. Uh, very informative, and thank you for taking your time out of your very busy schedules. We really appreciate it, and hopefully we'll, we'll be talking to you again soon.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you as well.
You're welcome. All right, with that, council, uh, we are at the end of our work session, and we can be adjourned if I have a motion to adjourn.
This is Kathleen, I'll motion.
Thank you, Kathleen. Is there a second?
Ann, I'll second.
Ann is seconding that, then all those in favor will signify with aye. Ayes, a whoa, a vote aye. Pam Mortenson?
Aye.
Kathleen Ruffkin?
Aye.
Um, Ann McGregor?
Aye.
John Chumperlin?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 7 o'clock. Thank you.